And I don't think by, I don't think it would be wise for us to take on anything. On seven o'clock.
You've got a pretty big agenda, but I think you would be right to add to it if you'd like.
Correct, correct. All right, being six oh four, I now call to order our work session. I want to wish everybody happy new year. This will be the first gathering of this council of the new year. I want to thank the town manager and crews for the response after the snowstorm. We have another one on the way. But ladies and gentlemen, the audience and those watching on video, we're trying to socially distance and be safe tonight. We do have all seven members here. You may not be able to see all seven. But I asked for a work session on goals and some folks have weekend retreats. Some folks go away from Blackstone and or Notaway County have retreats, but we agree, this council agree, we could do so. Here, and I simply ask for those of you who are so inclined to submit to me three goals. That you feel are most important and we can start, you can, I have some in writing, but if we want to start with Colonel Tom on the right. You know, one thing I will say before we start. Blackstone right now has got a lot going on and the staff is very busy and we don't want to lose sight of long-term goals, obviously. But also you can spend a lot of time planning and making lists and not getting anything done. And I think our town manager staff are more doers than list makers. If I'm, if I'm wrong, y'all let me know. Colonel Tom, this is. What are, what are you, three, or there's one, two, or three things that are, you feel that'd be the most important for council to make significant progress on this year?
Well, I'd like to see us make some significant progress on tourism.
I hear that a lot in the community, yes. Any specific?
Well, we need to get back on track with where we were going with the tourism. Committee and coming up with those goals and meeting with Santa Turner and getting that back on track, I think. And, and, and looking at available grants that are out there specifically.
Well, I will tell you Tobacco Commission just sent out a big notice today. You may have gotten a copy and Jordan Island has forwarded me an additional copy. That there is some Southern Virginia program money specifically to the area and tourism was one of them. Tourism broadband and several other things. That could be a social income. I think the application date is going to be coming sooner than maybe we can be nimble on committee, but some, some can pick the. But tourism is a specific use.
Would your tourism include by chance, not trying to lead the witness, would your tourism by chance include Carriage Museum or Schwartz Tavern being staffed to some degree?
Absolutely.
I hear, that's something I've heard. Things have been rather quiet. I've heard a lot about that in the last six months. Anything else, Colonel Tom?
Our, our comprehensive plan.
I think we updated that in twenty nineteen.
We did.
But it can be revisited at any time, but it's supposed to be mandatory every five years.
We went, I know one time this town went at least eight years. I think, I think we went a long time. Again, just because the nature of a town, it's a lot busier than the county, not trying to, you know, not trying to compare and contrast, but just the different responsibilities. Things are faster paced here, day to day, utilities, that sort of thing. We do have updated comprehensive plan.
And I thought we did, but I don't, I don't remember that we ever kind of really went.
It was adopted now. Is it used widely? Probably not as widely as it could be. The best thing about a comp plan, especially for a town, we got pretty defined boundaries. So it's not like we're doing huge visioning for areas around the county. But the most valuable part of it is when you do apply for a Tobacco Commission grant for tourism, that tourism is a highly rated goal or objective in your comp plan. And it ranked number two in the total number of things. So it is beneficial to us and we get points. Whenever our, we are doing that, which our comp plan, not mandates, but, but recommends. And those kinds of things are helpful to us and we can look at the goals and objectives and those are always beneficial to us.
Anything else?
Obviously the Armory, but we're, we're moving forward on that.
I think it's worth mentioning that. I like those goals. Mr. Nash, the finance chairman and the president of council.
My first one on there is Armory completed two to three years with additional grant funding. I would like to see us, obviously it's in motion, but it needs to be there to set it.
We hope to by the end of January receive positive news on our first grant application for the abatement project. And the application, I believe, is two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We're fully in. It's been confirmed that we've provided all the documentation we needed. And we hope that by the end of January, we'll get a notice and then be able to get that started during the process while they're doing the engineering and architecture. We have, we sat through a webinar the other day with the Commonwealth Regional Council and with the folks from the state. And the original idea for the Army was to apply for industrial revitalization funding. That's six hundred thousand dollar number. They have planning grants that they're going to do this year and it's our intention to apply for a planning grant to start with. And then for the summertime, have the, have the application in for a full grant. So we hope that's the case. We're not start, we're not finished there. Tobacco Commission, again, could be part of it. We've met with USDA and USDA does not fund with grant or loan any portion of the building. But there are things like AV wireless, all those additional things that really aren't in the construction budget. AV systems, DAIS for the council, those kinds of things. They're interested in furniture and fixtures and that sort of thing. So it looks like we may work with USDA and they've been very gracious with grant monies for that portion of it. So we're not done. We're just getting started on, on stuff. I really want to get that abatement money and get that started and get that behind us. So we don't have to sit around and think about and work about that anymore.
Number two I have on there, aid current developments to completion and begin revenue streams from those. I'm talking big projects like View Mac, the place down the end of Tavern Street, McCormick. I feel like those are, we need to not lose sight of the ones that are currently in progress that were, haven't been starting to draw on revenue for us. Still need to make sure they come to.
And I will tell you this, we had a request from Mr. McCormick with Waukesha Development this week to clean any of our personal belongings of the towns. We have a lot of stuff stored in there.
At the shop?
Water meters. Get it out because they're going to start their design.
The restaurant brewery.
Restaurant brewery. He may have a residential component. His zoning permit currently does not permit a residential component. But he may come back and ask you for a second floor or a portion of the building.
Talking about like twelve apartments upstairs at one point, something like twelve or eight.
Yeah, I don't think he can get that many. I think it may be something south of that, maybe four units or six units or something like that. But I wouldn't be surprised if you see a zoning request or a conditional use permit request to allow second floor apartments at a minimum, maybe even first floor.
Fantastic.
We've got to get our stuff out of the.
Mr. Nash is spot on. We don't want to forget about those. And it seems to me.
Large revenue streams sitting out there.
No doubt about it. It seems like everybody, you know, about a year or so ago, a lot of us were like in disbelief, like, well, it sounds good, but it's really going to happen. It looks like to me, you correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Town Manager, DUMAC very much in progress. Clay's assisted living slash the Blackstone Academy Military Square, Herbert Fitzgerald, the old VFW apartment, all those projects are in, they're concealed.
And McCormick is broken ground on College and Second Street. If you hadn't noticed, there'd been some movement of the building to get it away from the steep slope at the alley and a couple of things back there. But they're putting up cell fence and I think they're going to be starting on that building here very shortly.
Outstanding. What else, if anything, Mr. Nash?
Last, I believe, and you'll probably be shocked, but I would like us to spend more money in this year's budget to bring back the DBI position and have it as more of a DBI slash business advocate town job.
Here, here.
To not only encompass just downtown, but to encompass the entire town.
Sort of a hybrid position sort of, which would, and they, they report to the town manager, be a town employee.
Correct.
Could that be tied in with the, with the museums as well?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Might one day be tied into the Armory operations as well. That person might have an employee one day once we get there. But I like those, I like, I like those goals.
Can you say something about that one goal though?
You sure can. This is a council work session, but I, I'll always allow a little public comment.
Well, the only thing is, because you put this in the paper several weeks ago about that opportunity, you have to double check because it's a main street initiative. If you make it a town employee position, I know at the beginning Lafayette had a split position. You may end up losing the one C three and the grand writing abilities of DBI.
At this point though, I mean, I'm almost, do we gain as much from DBI being its qualified organization as much?
I mean, I'm just saying you, you need to.
Correct.
Ms. Ams, that, that's something certainly this council will look at and certainly, you know, it may be a benefit or not benefit. I do know there are localities out there that have a, a main street director that is a town employee and there's some that do it that are not a town employee. And we make a contribution, obviously, but I think we just need to get that conversation started. But certainly a fair point. Mr. Miller?
My first thing on the agenda is better healthcare. The town of Blackstone needs healthcare bad.
Health insurance?
No. Health.
Oh, healthcare.
Healthcare in this town.
Got you.
That is our biggest goal because I feel we'll be neglected.
I don't disagree with that. Philip and I have been, we've been to meetings and been told all nice and stuff and we've, have we seen any changes? I've seen no changes.
I'm not aware of any, no.
No. We've met, met. We've had great meetings. So healthcare as far as either better service from the facilities here or.
Look for other sources.
I think that's appropriate, especially with the way things are hopefully going to be building up. There's going to be more people that may be seeking something about healthcare.
Stand alone.
The only people that Philip and I have talked to that have ever shown any promise or interest and seem to be serious, and we've had a lot of lip service. Has been, have been the folks at BCU Community Memorial Hospital in South Hill. They've got Pickett on their radar, but I will tell you something and it's going to shock a lot of people, shocked me. These, you know, these folks love making people feel better, but they're, they're business. And we were told about three or four years ago out of Fort Pickett, Wilson Palmer's wife was out there as well. They want a minimum of, to, to, to cash flow to break even, sixty visits a day. That's ER visits. We talk about the standard, that's not, I've got the sniffles. That's, I've fallen off a bicycle. I've been injured at Pickett. I've been, you know. That's a lot for a small town area because when something big happens, normally you're gone, they're going to send you to St. Francis or Farmville, South Hill. But I do support, I think Mr. Miller's right.
So even though you said that. I still think maybe somebody we might can find that might say that, might not say, but you know, I, I know since I've been here. Healthcare has never been talked about until recently.
I agree.
And now the reason why it's talked about is because it's so poor.
Well, I think the standalone may even be out of our realm maybe for now, but maybe we need to reach out to people like Better Med.
Right, right. That's what I'm saying.
That's probably more patient first, like that.
Right. Yeah, because I mean, you drive through any small town. Right now, you'll see a patient first or one of those places in small towns and you, there's no way that you can convince me that they're saying, oh, you're going to have sixty people showing up here a day.
I would think so, but I'll tell you what it may be. It may be the case of the Blackstone Family Practice Center. I hate to cringe as I say this. It may, it may be somewhat of a deterrent to some of those companies thinking that, you know, why do I want to go with this competition? But hey.
We could assure them that it wouldn't be competition.
Yeah. We, we were told when the medical center was built and opened two thousand and nine, we were told, we were told after hours, Tuesday, Thursdays, Saturday hours. It's never happened.
Which, and, and another thing too, which you fail to realize, Pickett is out here, right? But I know these vets, all of us know, a lot of times the VA will send you, they, you got a card in your pocket, you can go to any of them. So, and we got fast C out here now.
Right.
So.
Very good goal, Mr. Miller, and I, I promise you that Mr. Vanoverback and I will get back on that. Do you know when we talked to Wendell, grew up from McKinney, last, I can't remember his last name, Wendell, he oversee, he oversees the Blackstone practice. What's that? That may be it.
Nice young man.
From McKinney. He's a really nice guy, very dynamic, but I just haven't seen any change. And we've, we've got a native daughter that's come back to practice there, Lisa York. She's probably been in medicine about fifteen, twenty years and they're just not even touting her. They're not even letting anybody know she's there. What else, Mr. Miller? Good, good observation.
My next thing is, you know, we doing a lot as far as building houses and all this. But we still got to remember, everybody can't afford this housing. So my second thing is come up with affordable housing. Because you know, Pickett is booming now, okay. Five years from now, it might not be booming. Then what they gonna do? Understand? We need affordable housing. We got people's houses falling down. We got people's houses, people's almost on the floor.
And when people are coming to town willing to pay twelve hundred bucks a month rent, if I own a house in a mediocre neighborhood, guess what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna raise that rent. I mean, it's just, that's just the market and then.
It all stems back to the price of materials. It's just skyrocketing, so.
Right.
But we gotta look out for the future.
Are you talking about, when you say affordable housing, which I think everyone will agree there's a need, are you talking about the town possibly getting a grant to build something or?
Whatever, whatever it takes for us to get some affordable housing, we need to get on it.
Very good. What else, if anything, Mr. Miller? That's the two really good goals, by the way.
I don't have anything else.
Ms. Williams?
Well, when I saw that, the question that was posed for our goals, for me, I have more personal goals for myself because I am new on the committee. I want to learn more about my role and responsibility of a town councilwoman. And then my second goal is for my ward to know me. I know some people, for everybody, I want to get out there and talk and everybody feel comfortable calling me and interacting with them. So I can come back with their concerns and a solution. And then I was thinking as I was coming up about the ongoing projects here. For VIMAC, I want to know, you know, what's the end goal, what's that, what that is and what's, when it's in sight, you know. Do we have a definite date or what's going on so the community can know? Because I'm right over there from that area and people are asking me and I don't know, so I need to know more.
Right on, right on. You can pretty much see it from your house. The latest, we've been told and Philip knows a lot more than I do, but I've had some email communication during the holidays with the, the two brothers. Their game plan is they're going to start renting hotel rooms in May. And shortly thereafter, they're going to break around a hundred more units on that property. You're going to have basically a two-part hotel or two hotels on that property.
Do you see that May timeline working?
It's ambitious.
I haven't been inside, but as far as the town's portion of it, the outside site work, it'll be done. We're almost done with the water and sewer. Dan's got his electric stuff. We're waiting on transformer to set. And next Monday night, a week from Monday, I'll present to you the stormwater bids that we received, which are reimbursed through our industrial revitalization fund grant.
I applaud Ms. Williams. You know, we think that, you know, we look, all of us live in our own world and, and, you know, people will watch TV and they can tell you who's, who's in Congress, who the president is. But a lot of people, even in small town Blackstone, can't tell you who their elected officials are. And I think that's, I think you're right. I think that's incumbent on us. And we used to have the police department pre-pandemic had a great event, had those community cookouts, you know, Ward A, B, C, D, E. And of course, obviously that, that hadn't been safe the last two years. That's all right. We're glad to see you here, Mr. Johnson. Anything else, Ms. Williams?
Yeah, one other thing I was thinking about, diversity committee, or I don't know if Blackstone is embracing that. I don't know what we doing. I do see small businesses opening up with different cultures, but more diversity for Blackstone.
You are correct. Some of the downtown businesses that have opened, it's not, it's not the downtown that a lot of us knew fifty years ago when it was just certain families having businesses and that's a good thing. That's where I think DBI and the chamber, you know, I can honestly say that every new business open I've been to, I've seen the chamber and DBI well represented. But I do think that's something to certainly celebrate and take note of. And we will, with council blessing, at our next meeting in January, I'll ask y'all to renew the annual Black History Heroes Award. Where we have started celeb, taking nominations from the public and then we announce the winners of Juneteenth. That seemed to go pretty well last year, so. Very good, Ms. Williams. Anything else from Ms. Williams?
That's it.
All right, very good. We'll move on to Mr. Morgan.
I'll just add two.
All right.
One being, I would like for us to look into implementing some type of beautification or upgrade of town and properties. If we're going to invite you to share our pride, you should be prideful in our property when they come in. And I would like for us to revisit and start discussing some HR representation again.
Human resources.
Yes.
Both, both definitely good. We did have a beautification committee. Of course, COVID sort of wrecked that and we got volunteer burnout and they, some people didn't feel like they were appreciated, that sort of thing. So obviously, good observations there from Lonnie. We'll move out to, now, Ms. Jones, was she, she, yes?
What I mostly have is things that my residents in my ward have concerns with. Ever since I've been ward E rep, hold on, let me pull this. All right, I have. Okay, what can we do different in twenty twenty-two to address concerns that residents may have? I think that sometimes we don't really look at things that's going on with certain residents, but that's the way they feel in my ward. So if we can tell how, wait, wait, hold on, hold on. If we can tell how we are going to handle a situation, we need to stay firm on what you said. I mean, we said we can't have something fixed or something repaired within a couple of months. We need to stay firm on that because I'm having an issue with people in my area saying, well, look, nothing is getting addressed. You know, I keep talking about it, keep talking about it, and I feel that we just need to kind of do that a little better. And of course, feeling he does good, but if somebody wants them done, they want it done. And they're coming to me like, okay, you're like, you're not doing anything. So I'm just, you know, is anything we can do a little different to handle concern?
Is there a specific project? I know, I know one thing, I believe it's in your word. I know some folks in Taylor Bottom have been talking about curb and guttering. Is that one of them or?
Pretty much that's one of them, but a lot of concerns is like, I mean, the, the streets, you know, I mean. All of that kind of stuff, just, just fussing about, you know, how come nobody never come in our area and clean out all the trash on the side of the road down Center Street?
Well, we used to pick up the trash. We had a full-time employee, but he, he chose not to work with the town anymore. There's a Mr. Wynn that was picking up trash and doing that strictly on Center Street and in specific areas. We don't have that part-time person working for the town anymore. And we can go back to it. He was a bus driver, if I'm not mistaken, he came and worked for the town. And then he's, he's departed with the town, but we can make some, make some adjustments and we can certainly pick up trash. But Center Street is on occasion filthy. It's a tremendous amount of trash in that ditch over there.
Goes back to show Lonnie's.
Not Center Street necessarily. I'm, I'm speaking, excuse me, on High Street going into Taylor's Bottom, that ditch next to the trailer park. Man, that thing is crazy full of trash.
Back to Lonnie's goal that we also need to stress upon our own residents that we need to share our pride. About our own stuff.
We've got a place not far from where I live and I'm, I'm sure two members of council see it regularly. When I finish my run on Tenth Street, there's private property where when there's trash in the road or near the road, I'll, I'll pick it up. When I see trash ten to fifteen feet in the yard, I, I'm nervous about going in the yard because I don't want somebody thinking I'm trespassing or trying to make some sort of statement that they're not keeping the yard clean. But we've got a situation, it's not, it's all over town. It's, it's, but I, I guess Sheila, to put, not put words in math, one of your goals would be for the town to follow through and keep residents updated.
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay.
I think a lot of it may have to do like with work orders. We need to clean out the ditch. There's no doubt. There's a work order and it's probably been sitting up at the shop for three months or four months or something like that. We haven't gotten to it. And we maybe need to get to them a little better, yeah.
You know, but I always say this. You know, you talk to us, but there's another solution to this problem too. Come to council meeting, air it out, that everybody will know what's going on. I mean, you can talk to me all day long. I can come in there and talk to you.
Yeah.
I'm not the one that has the problem. You had the problem regardless of what I say. So I tell people, if you got a problem, come to council meeting and bring it out. That way the public knows.
Or write a letter. Because the occasional, if, if Mr. Miller or myself are in a hurry and we get bumped into at Food Lion and someone verbalizes a concern. That probably is not the best way to make a concern. I'll try to remember it.
Right.
But like you say, if it comes, if it's to the council or email to the full council or they're here in person, you can be sure one of the eight of us is going to say, hey, whatever happened to so-and-so with their request? But that's a good, that's a very good point, Mr. Miller.
Yeah, and that's something I address all the time. I never see you at the meetings. Come to the meeting. You know, two or three voices better than one voice.
Correct.
So, I mean, you can preach that all day, but still at the end of the day, if you the ward in that area, I mean, if you the council member in that area, they coming to you and they looking at, okay, when, when nothing is getting done over here in Ward E.
Right.
So you know, I'm just like.
Well, what I would tell them next time, and next time, you know, if they do, if you hear enough voices, feel free at, during the council meeting, like at the end, under the mayor's minute or whenever, feel free to say that, hey, I've got four or five folks down there that are giving me an earful. And then we can get that in the council arena.
Well, a lot of citizens, they're so used to, when they, when they come to the town meeting, a lot of things won't happen. So they don't even come no more in African American, African American people feel like they should not even come and, and talk to you all because they know something's going to happen.
Right.
That's a true fact. And that's why they're always coming to the town, talking to people.
In defense, there are some things that can't happen.
We understand that part.
And, and there's several things like private property ditches and you've got to be super judicious about that kind of stuff. And I get the complaints all the time. You guys probably get the complaints. We know the big ones. We, there's Northwest Avenue, there's, there's over off Dealer Street. There's big construction projects that people want to do that we just can't jump into. Council reserves a right to do on private property if you choose to. You just got to be super judicious about some of those kinds of things.
Okay. Can I, can I address what you just said?
For example, for example, those who run at large, at large, you go ask African American right now, who would you a large represent, or council represent that represent you, also represent you? They couldn't even tell you. Because nobody's reaching out to them, letting them know, I'm at large, I represent you also. They don't know.
I don't know.
They don't know.
It doesn't even matter, in my opinion.
It, it, it just, it, it just.
It doesn't even matter, in my opinion, is the wards. I think everybody should be seen. If someone comes in, in Tom's ward or in the ward that I live in B, they should be able to go to Sheila and mention the same. I mean, it's not, we shouldn't restrict ourselves to, I live in, I live in Nathaniel's ward, but I can't go to Tom and. It needs to be everybody. We all need to, we all need to hear everybody's concerns, no matter where you are. You're just, the wards are there that there's equal representation.
That's correct. But you vote on everything. Like everybody up here votes on everything townwide.
Right.
Tom doesn't just vote on Ward C, he votes on all of them. But, but, but again, perception is reality and Mr. Johnson, I appreciate, you know, these are things, like I said, we all live in our own, myself included. I live in a big bubble. I go home, I watch Netflix, I'm in a JFKSS. That's my bubble. My wife and my daughter, that's my bubble. And we just assume that, well, because I've been in the office sixteen years, everybody knows that I'm the mayor. Well, there's a lot of new folks moving here. And like I said, there are folks here that have been underserved through the years and it's a mentality, not, not anyone here's fault. But just through the years, you know, it's, it's breaking out of that mold. You know, when you go back, Blackstone's history has not been friendly to underserved communities. Fact, fact. I will say this, I will say this, this council and the last several I've served on and to a member and to that town manager staff. If someone, I don't care where they live, they have a serious concern, it is a priority. But, but if, but if people feel like it's not a priority, then we've got to bridge that gap.
Exactly.
We've got to do that. And I, Sheila, your first goal was following through and keeping residents updated. You want to go with your others?
Yeah, the second thing, we got a race issue in the town of Blackstone. And I'm not saying so much the town council member, but that's all I hear out in the street. You know, it's just always this black and white thing, whether they're not the one for the blacks or whatever. So what can we do to kind of make the people understand it's not black and white, it's about everybody. Everybody's equal. Because I don't know about anybody else and I know I'm just not the only one to see that. I heard all the time, where you know, well, you know, nobody getting anything done in our area because it's all black people. But I'm trying to like, no, it don't work like that. You know, they doing, you know, areas by areas.
I think that's.
Talking is just like, no, no, we see a difference.
If I can share a little anecdote or a little story from years ago, when I was a very young man, very slender, dark haired, very nice, looked like Elvis. We had the same issue come up, same issue came up. And sadly, I spent several days at Larry's direction calculating how much money we spend in black neighborhoods versus white neighborhoods. Okay. And it, I promise you, and I can do it again. I really think it's not a good way to gauge things. But we can maybe more public meetings to let people know. Man, I, I know it's really concentrated in Mr. Miller's district right now and it's not so much in your district or yours or Carolyn. But we're spending a bunch of money primarily in black neighborhoods, water sewer replacement, curb and gutter. And remember the curb and gutter in these minority neighborhoods because we're doing it a certain way without getting grant money to do it. that curb and gutter is at no cost to the property owners, okay? Notaway Avenue, that was half paid by grant money, so there was no cost to the property owners. The town's policies are, somebody in Brunswick Avenue, they want curb and gutter, not really grant money available, they pay half. The mayor just had curb and gutter.
I have a six thousand dollar lien on my house right now for the curb and gutter I got.
I, I, I can't say the criticism is unfair, but we certainly don't make decisions based on race. I, that's not me, been around thirty years, you guys know me, that we don't roll like that.
And I know the, but how can you get, uh, people?
Better communication, maybe, yeah.
To know the.
That's a tough one, Sheila, because like I said, it's easier for me, and I haven't walked in a lot of people's shoes, but I look at the Ju- like, for example, Juneteenth. We were the only town our size in Southside to have a Juneteenth festival, and I saw diverse people there, it wasn't just a festival for African-Americans. Um, I would have liked to seen more, I would have liked to seen, you know, the, the after-hours event take place, I think that would have been really even more festive and it rained, of course, and we're gonna do, do that again this year, Lord willing. Um, like I said, Mr. Miller, the grant project in, in, in Ward, in Ward A is, uh, gonna end up being about five million dollars total between any kind of state grant.
And I know before Carolyn's time, in, in my predecessor Larry, he did things a little differently. And when he would do a housing grant, it wouldn't necessarily have the street components and the curb and gutter and all that. It was more fixing the houses and if you got a really nasty ditch or something like that, he would address it in smaller projects. And the reason we were able to do curb and gutter in Carolyn's district on Second Street, because we had grant money left over. So we asked them to let us put the curb and gutter down there, and that's why that one got curbed and guttered, because grant money didn't cost anybody anything either. The, we can do, and it is my intention, I know Eric's not gonna like it, but it's my intention that we put curb and gutter on every street in town, okay? But I can tell you, whether they're black or white, if you talk to somebody that's maybe lower income and you tell them it's gonna be forty-eight hundred dollars and I'm gonna put a lien on your house, it's not well received, I can tell you.
It's not, and the thing about, in the.
Not well received.
And in the African-American community, a lot of it, and, and it's, not just African-American community, but all over, if you're a tenant, your landlord may say, no, I don't want it, you the resident, yes, I want curb and gutter on the sidewalks around my house, but the landlord's like, no, I don't want that.
For a good example, in your neighborhood, Carolyn, I, we've been planning on doing curb and gutter on sidewalks from the bridge, Barber's Bridge, over the, I guess Amelia Avenue down to Notaway. And the reception has been one favorable property owner and that's it, and everybody else will know, we don't want it, we don't pay for it. Um, until I can find some gray monies, because here's the problem, I can go and put it in, but what about those seventy-five people that got liens on their houses all over town? And Tommy Watkins brought it up, planning commission. Yikes, what do I do? Do we relieve those? So I've got to kind of stick with it and stick with the fifty-fifty deal. And I'd love to see Amelia Avenue addressed, and you can walk from Notaway Avenue, you can walk to View Mag, ultimately down Fourth Street, get back to Main Street, all those kinds of things.
College Avenue.
Plenty of planning, but it costs people by the town's ordinances, it costs a lot of money.
But Philip, isn't that in the plan though, to bring that across the bridge and down there and?
That's, the plans are drawn. But the property owners would have to pay half, and if you remember, we replaced the sewer last year. Now we're ready to put improvements on top of that sewer line, because we don't want to build it on a crummy sewer. And on that side of the road, we talked to all the property owners and one was agreeable. And one isn't enough, I don't think, you know?
What he adopted, her question. Question is, what can we do to really people, the African-American peoples, so they won't feel like it's being a racist thing? What can we do as a group up here to show them, we all know that it's not like that, but the wards not gonna leave reasons though. True, they, they gonna see it that way, they don't come because that's the way they feel.
Perception's reality.
What can we do to show them that it's not happening like that?
I can tell you what we can do. If somebody come to you or me and they got a complaint, tell them, say, okay, town council meeting is the third way, is to come up here and see what it's about.
And there again, Miller, that is being addressed to the people, because I'm not gonna just stand there, don't tell them that.
Right.
What you mean?
I mean, my opinion, I don't feel that, you know, it's like that. But when somebody else is just like, oh, look, come to the meet.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying, just tell them that.
But they're not coming, but still, we still got that problem. And I feel that it needs to be addressed in some kind of way, I mean, we already know they're not gonna come to the meet. I mean, in my ward, since I was being the leader, I, I haven't seen too many people in my ward come to a meet.
One of the things I do, I'm about to just give you all a little secret, I'm not saying it's foolproof, but for me, here's what I've learned to do when I, I get an earful, whether it's in Food Lion or Walmart or wherever, and I'm like, I'm like, all right, you're making a lot of noise, calm down. What is the complaint, what is my transgression? What do you feel that I have not done or done or I've done wrong? And I'm gonna make a li- I'm gonna write it down so I can correct it. And inevitably, it just, it's just more noise. And one thing I've learned, and again, don't, I don't want anybody to think I'm taking this lightly, but I've learned through social media and just human interactions, sadly, there are gonna be some people, and I'm talking white and black people, that just aren't happy. They're frustrated and they may have reasons to be frustrated in their own life, and we're not gonna be able to, to, to make them all Town of Blackstone bumper sticker people. But what we do do, in my opinion, we keep having Juneteenth, we keep having these discussions. We, one person at a time, will say, look, did you know that right now in Blackstone, there's a five million dollar grant project in a predominantly African-American community? Do you know that Blackstone spent forty-eight thousand dollars building outdoor basketball courts because there was a need for basketball? That, and that's for all children. Um, I hear people complaining about recreation, I'm like, folks, drive me to another town right now that has invested more in youth recreation per capita than the Town of Blackstone.
With a lot more proposed.
Right, um, but again, I, I, I think we, we win it one day at a time smiling with facts, that's my opinion.
I love everything we're saying right now, and, and I don't know what the answer is, and I agree with you, you know, what can we, what can we do, physically do? And maybe something we could do is once a quarter, but this, this is my question, once a quarter, we, we, as a council, go meet with each ward.
Have a word meeting.
But the question is, where, okay? Because we can't just go down, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna go meet on Center Street or wherever.
Fire station, once a quarter.
Right, so we go to the fire station, but here again, are they gonna come?
But why, why don't?
If we say specifically for Ward E.
Let's find out.
Are they gonna come?
Let's find out.
Let's find out.
They're gonna say, oh, we're not gonna come because y'all don't, you, you.
Instead of doing that, why don't you go the step further and we've got the bus that we can use? Why don't we just take a quarterly tour and actually go to each ward and stop? Get out, look at an issue, all of us, not a committee.
Well, the problem there is, what time do we do it? You know, because if we're doing it at night, you know, we're not gonna come out and stand in the middle of the road.
You're not gonna solve everybody at one time, but you gotta hit them out slow.
You're probably gonna need to ride the bus.
You'll ride the bus.
Yes, indeed, Carolyn.
Ms. Williams, Ms. Williams would like to make a comment.
I'm one of the new kids on the block, and I have lived in Blackstone for thirty years, I'm not a native of Blackstone. But however, I didn't know a lot of the stuff was going on in Blackstone until I came on the, on the, um, council, um, member. Philip took me around and I saw things that was going on in the black and white community that I had no idea. I was very impressed with it, so of course I love to talk, I'm going back telling everybody, but did you know all this was going in the Blackstone? So we can take the excitement that we have for what we're doing and our progression and educate and communicate. Why can't we put a little article in the paper, hey, did you know Blackstone is doing this?
Would you like for me to start doing a monthly, I know we do board packet, but a report, like a town manager report, these are the things that are going on.
I'll give you the space, I'll give you the space.
Paper, I think it needs to go in the paper.
Yeah.
That, that and maybe, and that and maybe with the bills, so, Dr. Hawks, you've been patient, Dr. Hawks.
Yes, well, I think you all are moving in the right direction now, but what probably really is, is you have a lot of issues. People really don't, uh, who their representatives are and what they have done and what they're planning to do. Uh, you need to sell yourselves to the community. Well, you can say, no, you're gonna have to brainstorm among yourselves and create it. Sometimes it doesn't take everybody to show up in one neighborhood.
Is Facebook a better way to get ahold of people?
But there are ways, if you can contact people, maybe through a newsletter from your office, uh, whatever. There are creative ways, people in Blackstone really do not know what is going on. If you want to go back here, say, or maybe somebody will write something on Facebook.
Right.
That will turn everybody off. So they need to know from you guys and women what's going on and be honest about it. If you made a mistake, say you made a mistake and correct it.
Sure. Good stuff, but maybe, maybe better communication from the town, from all of us, from the town hall, with maybe like a little bullet point like, you know, this week, you know? Like, I, I did, I did not know until tonight, and this is my fault, not Philip's fault, I, I did not realize Mr. McCormick had broken ground. Because, because like I said, Blackstone's got fifty-six miles of paved roads in the town. So how many miles do we drive a day in town? Probably three or four, to Walmart and Food Lion and back and, or downtown D.
See, that's, uh, sir, that's a bullet that people need to know. Uh, uh, there's so many different things going on, people just don't know anything about.
There's a project going on right now, Philip told me two days ago, I could get over there, there's massive, uh, work going on near Rugglesworth on phase two of our sidewalks, uh, the schools grant, which is, which is huge.
I saw that. Only way I find out things, I have to write.
Right, right.
Get the detour.
Right there at the ball park.
Yes.
Those twenty-four units are coming in.
But people are busy in the community trying to fend for themselves and make a living and pay their light bills or whatever. They don't have time to ride around and find out what's going on. They have their representatives in place.
That's on me, I'll do that.
Representatives have to talk to the people. People know they claim they're not listening, but you still gotta listen to what their concerns are, write it down and maybe publish it and, and announce it here at these meetings.
Sure.
Here are the concerns that my rep, uh, people have approached me about. Then they, then, sure, they show up in paper, then eventually they say, hmm, maybe my rep is doing something there.
Well, that's, this is good conversation, because I'll be honest with you, this has probably been the quietest last year or so I can recall. And I try not to bother him because right now it's project oriented, and, and to, to Mr. Johnson's point earlier, a lot of folks, a lot of folks will look at the town working at View Mac and town vehicles at other projects as favors or whatever, and it's absolutely just basic town service, you know, no one's getting a special deal, it's like what the town would do for anybody. But I think one thing we all, no matter where we grew up and where we are in our stage of life, View Mac is gonna be something that rises, that lifts some boats, not everybody's boat. And certainly the people investing the money are the ones that stand the most to make, but they've also taken the most risk. Dennis Rapp at Clay's Assist to Living, five years ago, we were having a packed house about Clay's Assist to Living and the residents walking around town and committing felonies and shoplifting at Dollar General. And now we're gonna have, you know, America's finest patriots living on Luenberg Avenue, who are gonna spend money all over town. Um, and that's the old VFW park, which many of us wonder, what in the world ever happened there? I remember April two thousand eleven, there was a shooting there, there was a shooting there at a ball field.
Yeah.
Now there's gonna be apartments there, um, you know?
Twenty-four.
So.
Yeah, I, I mean, there have been some improvements, I have seen neighborhoods improve, uh, especially on the east side. Um, but getting down to the real and gritty of the situation, people need to know what's going on.
Yes.
Good and the bad.
Amen, brother, I agree.
Okay, and they need to know and clear English, this is what's happening.
Well, look, we appreciate that.
And encourage people in your newspaper, for example, to come to the meet, make them feel at home. A lot of people say they don't come to these meetings because they get cold shoulders, people up there, we don't burn.
Man, that, that breaks my heart to hear that, because I've, I've gone out of my way to make people feel welcome.
I wouldn't say negative, man, I'm like, what you doing here? So, uh, they wanna come, they wanna express themselves, this is like making wine, it's foaming. Why you can't get anything done because what you guys, the people foaming on the surface. Other words, there's a whole lot of negativity going on, and you ride around town saying everything's great, but no, it's not great because the people down in the trenches are angry.
Well, very, very good points, and we need to hear that. I mean, I, I don't, you know, Tom Brady didn't get to be a great quarterback, being told how good his barrel was every, every game. He had a coach get on him and say, look, you missed that guy, you overthrew that guy in third quarter. That's, that's great, because I like to compare him sometimes, he's not Tom Brady, but he's, ma- 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 maybe a young Marina.
I'm a dolphin, yeah, that's bad, yeah, I'll take that.
I want to get to Annie Scott, I want to get to Annie Scott before we get to redistricting, because we got.
Were you done, Ms. Jones? I thought you.
Oh, yeah, you got one more goal. Yes.
Doing something maybe for the senior citizens out at seat park, just some type of recreation for the older people. You know, we don't have anything like that in the town.
Well, one thing we talked about, I believe, Ms. Jones, you remember, and this was right before pandemic, and I know everybody's tired of hearing things blamed on COVID, but it's just a fact. We had talked about, I think William Clark was one person mentioned it, I think Mr. Nash mentioned it, some sort of Blackstone, just big community cookout, maybe like in September, that's come one, come all, and meet your friends and neighbors. And play cornhole, eat a meal, keep it simple.
Hopefully some programs can be created in Armory for seniors.
Right, that's important.
Good idea.
But that's a good goal, senior citizens, because we, we do have a lot of them. None of them are here tonight, but we do have senior citizens amongst us, but I don't see anybody here tonight that's a senior citizen. Everybody looks too young, everybody looks too young, you're too young, Dr. Hawks. Last but surely not least, our, our, our newest rookie, Annie Scott, Annie, what are some concerns you have?
Okay, well, everyone has pretty much, um, already addressed what my focus is. Uh, one of my goals is better communication, because one of the problems is, we don't know what's going on in Blackstone. Because just like Ms. Williams said, I had no idea about any of the construction going on in this town until Philip showed me.
Okay.
So, a lot of it is that people don't think Blackstone is doing anything. Right, okay, I live on Lester, and yeah, and I hadn't been paying attention to what's going on in East End. So, yeah, I didn't know about the apartment. So really, the problem isn't that, um, we aren't doing things for African-Americans. The problem is African-Americans don't know what the town is doing. And so we do have to do a better job with communicating what the town is doing, what our plan is for growth, I mean, all of that. So, yeah, it does look like nothing's going on, uh, but it, it really is, and, you know, I'm excited about it. And one other thing for me, yeah, I would like to see more social things in the town, because we, we need to promote the town. We know, we know everything that is going wrong in this town, but nobody knows what's right in the town. So I think the only way to get rid of the negativity is when we start promoting the positivity, because we don't talk about that. So, yeah, the people who don't come to council, well, then we just gotta get the information out to them. And so, yeah, whether it's in the paper or, we can tell them word of mouth.
It's all the above, it's paper, social media, it's, it's.
Word of mouth is a good thing too, so.
Newsletter.
So when you leave this, this meeting, and when people come to you with that negativity, you can say, well, no, that's not a hundred percent true, because the council is trying.
Right.
You know, so, and then of course also the blighted properties and.
Big.
And, yeah, so, you know, right at the basketball court, yeah, kids go out there and play, trash is everywhere. So, yeah, because I'm thinking, well, next time I walk by, I'm carrying a trash bag with me. But, so we do need to figure out what we're gonna do about that, how we're gonna promote pride in the town, for people to pick up behind themselves. Whether we're gonna ask for volunteers, whether we're gonna get church, churches involved, but we do need to clean up the town. And you gotta figure out how it's gonna get done, because yes, it needs to be done, but as citizens, we also need to do our part. It's just not enough to just say.
No, I agree.
Stuff isn't getting done and they're not doing this for us, we, we have to be a team.
We've been weak on, on work orders, I'll give it to you. Got a ditch or a pipe that's full, it takes a real low priority, I'll get to it when we get to it, and it sits over Dan's office or my office until Wallace has the day when he's not doing something, or they finish wrecking leaves or they do something else. So, work orders, I do think I can tell you I'm, I've been weak on that. The guys, we gotta fit, once they get it, once Wallace gets it, it is done, Wallace is the man, he's great. But it's, well, we need the guys over, for example, we're running underground electric to some duplex units behind Goodwill this week. And the guys that usually do work orders, we're down there pulling cable and doing that sort of thing for Dan. So there's other stuff going on, okay? It's not an excuse not to clean out a ditch six months after we've talked about it, yes, we need to, we need to improve our work order and tracking work orders. If somebody's called in and said there's a street light out, we don't need to wait eight weeks to get a street light fixed, we need to probably do a little better on that. I, I will tell you that is a weakness that I have in the town, is not stressing just that little stuff that we need to, that causes people to lose confidence. I called them about my street light a month ago, nay and dunno, so we need to, to do a little better on that.
Maybe just make a list or whatever, yes, Beverly Anne.
All right, as a citizen, I very rarely use anything but my driveway, but I can come out of my house almost every day and there's trash. I'm not putting the trash out there, it's others. So, going back to taking pride in our town and teaching responsibility, um, maybe it takes the people who are dropping the trash, I mean, the trash doesn't show up on its own, somebody has to do it. Especially if you've got a, a ditch that's full of it, how do we get that respect for property?
You know, you know what the answer is, and y'all gonna cringe when I say this, but I'm just telling you, as someone who picks up litter, there's not a child that's educated in Notaway County that is not told in. there's not a child that's educated in Notaway County that is not told, and told again, that litter is bad. There are people that don't respect property, and it's gonna take a litter cam, and I like to see a litter cam, I, I'll, I'll say it publicly, I want a litter cam at the end of Lunenburg Avenue and Tins Street. Because I can tell you right now, if I ever find a receipt that reveals identity, I will have to resign this office, and I will find them, and it will, I will at least get cursing, cursing abuse, because I'm tired of it. But I, we can all go kumbaya and go, let's all show our pride, and that's needed. And we need volunteers to pick up trash, but it's gonna take making some public examples out of somebody, and when we find out who some of them are, it's gonna be, oh, Lord, not, not, it's gonna probably be somebody's child that may be even well-to-do, or whatever, but we've got to, I hate to say it, we've got to embarrass some people, and make them ashamed, and then forgive them, and show them where they're gonna pick up trash. That's just, that's-
That's the law court, I make everybody, when I see it, I make everybody stop playing basketball, right, get in there. Clean up, it's all this trash first, then we can stop playing basketball.
Yep.
If they give me a dollar grip, I say, hey, we can shut it down.
That's right. That's right, Mr. Johnson, that's all right, and you, you and, and Mr. Mitchell, I know you haven't been around here a lot, Mr. Mitchell was good about that too, saying, guys, look, there, you know, people, people are looking for you to fail, don't give them a reason.
I put trash in my truck.
I, I wanna say one thing as a mayor, I, I don't, I didn't list any goals tonight, but I wanna say something. And I think it's, it can't be overlooked, the conversation we're having tonight in this council chambers, with the people from all walks of life that are in these council chambers right now. This conversation could not have been held twenty years ago, without hurt feelings, or without somebody being saying, oh, you're just a complainer. That's progress, and I will say this also, as someone that goes around, I don't believe that, you know, Blackstone is Nirvana and perfect by any means. But I will tell you right now, that it, beyond Blackstone, in my opinion, we're viewed as a progressive town. People from beyond, well beyond Blackstone, the way the community reacted to the Afghan evacuation, when a lot of folks were nervous, and this, that, or the other, the overall response by Blackstone was one of compassion, um, and embracing the, the new challenge, the troops and the people that come to picket, the new residents coming here, several have remarked about how they, they love Blackstone, they, they found their, their ta-, their dream town. Um, but again, like Dr. Hawks, Mr. Jump, and she, we have to be mindful that not everybody is living in the land of milk and honey. And there are people that are having problems making ends meet, and that's fueling their angst, and we've gotta be cognizant of that. And, um, but I'm proud of the fact that the conversation had tonight, with audience participation, could not have been held twenty years ago. That's my thought, and I think, um, we- Yes, sir.
Uh, don't you think that we need some type of organized recreational program? Of course, if you isn't out there playing. But sometimes they need to have adult supervision, that will show some leadership out there, and just not have the kids just mingling among themselves, uh, trying to figure out what's going on. And there, can you consider in your budget, where you can hire, uh, not one or two, maybe three or four people to, to supervise, or orchestrate, or organize, um, activities? Of course, you would say you got the Gators and all that.
No, no, I, you're, you're correct, I'm gonna tell you what I think the, really, the long-term thing is, now, the answer to what you're saying is yes, but it's gonna cost money. The real answer to recreation, in my opinion, and, and Mr. Benorbet came from accounting, that ideally should be a Notaway County Parks and Recreation Department, with Alex, because you've already got the, you've already got the Notaway Rec Association that's consolidated. Crew and Berkle election have come together, the Gators are consolidated, I, I think-
Not a Gator, not consolidated.
But I mean, they, they, they-
For the whole county.
Kids from the whole county play, you don't have a Blackstone versus Crew Berkle. Um, it certainly could be put in the budget, but I, I, I think really, we should, I think maybe this town council could pass a resolution, and say, hey, Notaway County, when they're doing the budget in two months, you know, we, the county's made a lot of change. A lot of it's been painful, but, but it may be time to, to take on recreation, that where you have a, a director of recreation, and maybe each town has their assistant or whatever, that's, you know, Philip's got more experience than I, you know, Philip knows something, because Amelia had, the landfill funded Amelia's, didn't it, at one time?
Well, I think the position was created as a gentleman named Glenn Wilkerson, he's been there for, gosh, I hired him in probably nineteen ninety-nine, or ninety-eight, so he's been there that long. He's on the school board, what he does, and Amelia's a little different, baseball is still independent.
Okay.
Baseball is still offered at the academy, and many in the black community ain't cool about going over to the academy and playing baseball, so baseball is handled by the academy, the county tried to have a baseball, but they just weren't enough kids. They just weren't enough kids to support two programs. Uh, but Amelia County is blessed, it has a gym, we will probably have a gym here before too long, approximately the same age category, okay? And Glenn, and he has part-time coordinators that coordinate football, he has a part-time coordinator that does cheerleading, he has a part-time coordinator that does basketball, and they don't have any problem getting kids. There's a lot of kids that participate soccer, all those kinds of things, and Glenn is in charge, and they have open gym at the Oval War Memorial Building, I don't know, three nights a week, or whatever it is, and one of those coordinators, or volunteers, keep the gym open, and I can't say it's much more than basketball, it wasn't when I was there, but we also have an organization through the, um, oh, there's a lady that works at the county through the ag agency, and they do things like summer camps.
Or is it extension, extension agent?
Extension, they do summer camps, they'll do those kind of things for, for people, uh, but it takes somebody with energy to find all the resources and get it going, and, uh-
They also have like, uh, pretty cool, uh, senior citizens, just adults.
They have senior citizens. Well, they have walking days, where the seniors get it for two hours on Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday mornings, and they can walk in there without kids knocking them over with basketballs, and those kinds of things. I anticipate doing some of that here, in the Armory.
I'm gonna, what I'm gonna do, folks, we've got a regular advertised meeting, um, I wanna wrap up the work session. What I would ask staff, and if every member of council wants to, staff has heard some recurring themes tonight. I think, I think the basically recurring theme is, I've heard tourism, I've heard communication, I've heard maybe like newsletter, or the town manager's desk, something like that, little col- column, um, and combating the negative stereotypes, and getting out in the community, and saying, come on, what, tell me your question, your concern, here's some facts, so let's, if we could, at our January meeting, which is on the fourth Monday, because King Day is next Monday, maybe have a little hot spot to the top five themes that we've heard tonight, and then this council can approve them, and say, let's go. At this time, I am going to adjourn the work session. I'm gonna call to order our hybrid, half regular, half special council meeting, it's now seven oh three, and I'll ask you to join me in a moment of prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together once again, and thank you for this new year, and I am, I know we all, our Father, are especially grateful for the growth of this community, not just in bricks and mortar, and dollar bills, and revenue, but spiritual growth in this community. Uh, neighbors being able to talk to neighbors about topics that in the past have been very awkward and uncomfortable. We thank you for the grace that you've shown upon us earlier tonight, and every day. Father, be with this council as they take on a busy year in Blackstone and the staff, protect our fire and rescue and police, who are getting called on more and more to all kinds of situations that no one ever dreamed about twenty, thirty years ago. And be with our children during this pandemic, as we go through another phase of that. And again, Father, we're just grateful to be here tonight, in your presence, and just help us to conduct the business that's in the best interest of the people of Blackstone, and let it be pleasing in your sight. And we ask for these things in the name of your son and our Savior, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
We now invite you, uh, stand, uh, if you can, and, uh, join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I choose the flag, it's changing, I want to turn it back now. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I wanna thank everybody for coming, we will have a regular council meeting on the fourth Monday. I would like to make one adjustment on the agenda, just because I see Mr. John Listman here, and on the agenda, he is after numerous public hearings, could we move Mr. John Listman to the top, because he is here? And just to summarize, Mr. Listman, if you look at your packet, he had a chakra of a water bill, I believe it was his bill that he received in November, I believe.
You wanna address it, Brittany can address it.
Come, come forward, Mr. Listman, and, and make your request to the council, and we, we have some documentation of the bill, and your prior usage, it's just a, it's a water and sewer.
As you can see on, on the handout, my normal water usage is about four hundred gallons a month.